Okay, thank you everyone for coming tonight. We, before we get into any of the main issues, I'd like to ask the Select Board, are there any agenda additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any agenda additions or deletions, but due to our audience, I know what most of them are here for, I would actually make the motion that we move the inclusion statement immediately following this, prior to even approving the minutes.
Uh, is that all right with the rest of the board?
Yep.
That's fine.
Okay.
Motion made, seconded by Bob.
Hold on, favorite motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And, just for everybody's information, Cash couldn't be here tonight, he had a hip replacement. He said he might try, but I kinda talked him out.
He's not moving too great.
That might have been the medicine talking.
Yeah. Alright, to get this going, we did promise in two meetings ago, that we would consider this, the Select Board, and then, there was a lot of questions that came up, and people making some phone calls to Katie, myself, I think other members of the Select Board as well, and, what we did do, was we contacted the Secretary of State's office, and leagues, too, right Katie? And we get in touch with leagues, to find out some legal boundaries, whatever.
Um, no, we did not.
Oh, okay, I thought we did, but, my mistake. But anyway, when, when we were investigating some of this with the, the state government, that's when, uh, our governor signed a declaration of inclusion. And so then we looked that over, and we kinda worked out, uh, some verbiage that we think might work for all of us. So, if you would like, I could read that, or Rob can read it. I have one eye, it's shut.
For the record, I can read it. Um, so again, this is a declaration of inclusion that's being proposed tonight. Um, "The town of Clarendon formally condemns discrimination in all of its forms, and welcomes all people who want to live and work and add richness to our town. Clarendon calls upon all residents to denounce prejudice, to openly acknowledge and address our own implicit bias, and welcome and celebrate all people, and continue to work together to ensure every individual can live freely, equitably, and express their opinions." And the propose, current proposal is to adopt that tonight.
And all Select Board members present will sign it. This is, um, some of the verbiage was taken from what the governor had signed off on, and I think that, uh, for me, speaking as one member, I think that that works, um, in line with what had been proposed. Uh, so, does anyone in the public want to have any comments?
I, for one, think it's, it's a good statement, it's a solid statement, it's very inclusive, and I agree with it.
Thank you, Marge. Anybody else? John?
So, I've got the governor's declaration here, and, the first paragraph says, "The state of Vermont formally condemns discrimination in all its forms and welcomes all people who want to live and work and add richness to our state, regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender identity or expression, age or disability, and will protect those classes to the fullest extent of the law." And then at the end, the same thing comes up again, after addressing all, or addressing our own implicit biases, "celebrate all people of all races, colors, religions, national origins, sex, gender identity or expression, ages, disabilities, and continue to work together to ensure every individual can live freely, equitably, and express their opinions free from fear and tolerance and prejudice." I'm just wondering why all of that was taken out of the, the statement that you folks put forth?
The, I think, for me, is, we are agreeing with what the governor has signed off on, the governor of the state. Um, the small community of Clarendon, uh, I think this is acknowledging what the governor-
Can I, can I talk to this about this?
Sure, go ahead.
I didn't wanna list groups, because you're gonna leave somebody out. I mean, I can tell you right now, um, there's nothing, nobody mentions anything about topography on there. When I moved to Vermont, I heard Flatlander, I don't know how many times. I don't see anything in there about that kind of discrimination, that kind of, um, and, you know, I mean, it was disparaging to me. Yeah, I'm a Flatlander, I'll, I'll admit that I am, but, so I didn't wanna leave anything out. So if, if we just call on all people, you're not naming any groups, we're not leaving any groups out. We're including all groups. That's why I, I kinda liked leaving it out.
The problem is that by not putting those group, by not listing those groups that are historically marginalized communities, then you're not really saying that you are including those groups.
Oh, that's not true. That's not true.
I, I disagree with that, I think it's, it's similar to the All Lives Matter response to a Black Lives Matter flag or statement or sticker.
But I don't want somebody coming back a month from now, I don't want somebody coming back a month from now and say, "You left something out." And then another month later, somebody come back and say, "You left us out." And then we gotta keep adding, and we gotta keep looking at this over and over and over again.
I guess my question would be, why not? When we learn to do better, can I jump in?
Absolutely.
Then, then we do better. And while I appreciate the frustration of being called a Flatlander, I think that's been said to me, too, perhaps behind my back, um, it's not something that's been, um, systemically and marginalized, it's not-
There's not a Vermonter in the state of Vermont that has not said the word Flatlander. I can guarantee you that.
I'm not saying that it's not-
So that's systemic.
I'm not saying that it's not an insult. What I'm saying is that we haven't created policy nationally, or within this town, that has made it so that it's more difficult for somebody who would be identified or identify themselves as a Flatlander, to do something like, um, see themselves reflected in curriculum, or get access to a loan, or seek equity in medical care. None of those things are connected. While it is insulting, and we can always find offensive names, this statement isn't to, isn't intended to include, um, ways that we would offend each other. What it's intended to talk about is in inclusion. So the difference would be, when we boldly state who we include, we're being really clear about it. As an example, the last time you and I spoke here in this setting, um, we talked about race, and you and I had an exchange about, um, race and your understanding of it, I don't, I, I fear for speaking for you, but as I understand our, understood our exchange, you had said something about race, and had said something about whiteness, and I had said, "Well, whiteness is included in race." And, that was how I understood that exchange, and I think that that's part of growing and learning, is understanding that piece. So if we add, if there's a list that people have looked over in the state of Vermont for a while, it's not going to be some random act where somebody comes forward and says, "We need to add this group or this group." It's not preferences, it's identity. And so I would like to see that the list of populations who've been marginalized by dominant culture, added back into this statement, so that we're clearly saying that we honor all genders, we honor all races, we honor all religions, and I, I think that that's a decidedly different statement.
Well, I've also, you know, I've, I've talked to a lot of people, and, the people that were against the statement that you guys proposed, looked at this and said, "Yes, I can support that." So, you know-
And, and there's an entire base of knowledge, of study, that would explain that answer. I a hundred percent believe that people would genuinely expect that leaving out specific identities as a list, and just saying, "We include everyone," is enough. And what I'm saying is this work, the work that we're doing, an inclusion statement, genuine acceptance requires that we make, that we say that these are the people that we are accepting, these are the populations and the identities. And it makes sense to me that people would feel uncomfortable.
Wait a minute, let me just jump in here, it says, and this is why, um, I feel that these things are covered. Uh, "The town of Clarendon formally condemns discrimination in all of its forms," and that's what you're speaking to.
Yes.
But instead of having a list, we're, I mean legally, you could say if somebody's calling here again, "Flatlander," uh, and somebody is discouraged, or somebody is saying, "You're picking on me" kinda thing, that's covered under this. And it, it just doesn't, in my opinion, it just doesn't, uh, if you have a list like that, like, you're suggesting, and John's suggesting, then, if there's something not on there, then we have to go through this whole thing again. To, so this is all-inclusive, to use the term, um, the way we have it written up, we, you know, and, and it mirrors what the governor has already signed, so if somebody legally has a, uh, you know, in our town, you didn't say discrimination against, because I'm black, but we can say that this mirrors what the, the state has already signed off on.
But it doesn't.
It does.
It, it doesn't. You're saying all, but you're not actually saying, you're not speaking to the marginalized population that the laws all along have been continually marginalizing, by not stating it. If the governor can state it in his statement, why shouldn't we as a town adopt it in our statement, when all of the other surrounding towns are accepting it? It's making, why wouldn't you put it in the statement? All of the surrounding towns are.
Well, white-
Why would we want it to be different from everybody else? Why wouldn't you accept it?
Some of the towns haven't, but what, I mean, you could add to this, as stated-
They, they actually have, it fell out.
As stated in, as stated in the, the letter signed by the governor. Instead of going through all of this, Marge?
Well, actually, by saying race, and by saying gender, you are actually putting out there a problem that does not exist in this town. We have never excluded anyone in this town.
Can I speak first, I have to go down?
Sorry.
Of course I wasn't concerned.
Let me tell you what Timoth did, and they told me, they put a little, little blip in. Not limited to race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, income wealth, veteran status, sexual orientation, age, marital status, family status, disability, gender identity, and gender expression. So you have all these things that are forefront now in our news, and I think if you include all, like God said, "All are equal." But if you put out there race, and you put out there gender, you're picking up on something that's in the news today, might not be in the news tomorrow, there may be something new, like Art said, coming down the pike. If you include everyone, when Clarendon has never excluded anyone. Let me tell you what our chief sheriff did. There's a young man, a black man, young man, dying of cancer. He wanted one thing to lay one more night against his fiancee. The sheriff who lives in Clarendon, chief, went to the hospital, and loved him out of that bed, and took him to his fiancee. Now, we, he was a young black man. We have never excluded anyone in, in this town. And you're, you're, you're trying to bring forefront certain, certain ethnic groups or certain gender in this town, and you have to name everybody, Jews, everybody in this town, if you're going for race, you're going for, we're all a race.
We're a race.
We're all a race, but we don't, we, we're not against anybody in this town.
Well, maybe you're not, but I think there are people who are against people of-
There are people probably that always would be, but there's gonna be something else coming down the pike, and we may not have it in it, but if you include all, do you not understand "all" is "all"?
That's what I'm, I'm suggesting-
Look, can I just speak for a second? I've lived in, I've lived here for forty-three years, I grew up here, and I just wanna say that homophobia is a problem in Clarendon, that I experience it on a regular basis in this community, and I'm here because I still love being here, and because I wanted to come back and raise my son here. So there are things that are particular, racism, racism is a problem here, homophobia is a problem here, and that's why those things are named, because historically, I can tell you, I needed this statement thirty-eight years ago, when I, I, you know? So, I, I think that, you know, the, if I could just finish, that, you know, the governor included those identity groups for really particular reasons. First of all, they're identity groups protected by law, they're protected classes, and they're protected for a reason, because they've been historically discriminated against, and that doesn't exclude Clarendon, we've discriminated against those classes here. So I would, I guess if, you know, I'm not entirely sure what the concern is, but I guess if it's that everybody's gonna wanna jump on the bandwagon and put their identity into the inclusion statement, perhaps we should reach out to towns who have included those identities, to see if that's really been a problem, because I bet it hasn't. I bet those towns are not getting phone calls every day, asking for other folks to be included in their statements, but why don't we call them and find out if that's really the concern?
Oh, can I ask something?
Yes.
Um, you said that, um, if another group felt left out and they wanted to be part of the, the statement, so what's the problem with coming back and adding them? I mean, like she said, it's a matter of learning, and, so we meet again and we add them, I mean, how hard is that? It's just another meeting, right? I mean-
Right, but, like I said, for me, one person, when the term discrimination in all of its forms is officially adopted by the town of Clarendon, then, to your point, and to your point, if you're having some trouble with your neighbor and he's calling you whatever, we've already adopted this, so that, in my personal opinion, if we had the sheriff go up and say, "Hey, you know, in the town, we don't do this," I think that it would, instead of saying, "Alright, let me see, the third topic down, you're discriminating against me." "All" is the same thing, in my opinion, so-
So if people of lived experience of the identities that are listed, that are being left off, disagree, if they feel like a statement of inclusion lacks a representation of them, because it doesn't list the categories that are protected classes, if the people of lived experience say that, if you're, would that be something that you would then say, take into account?
There's, to be honest, there's nothing we can do about any of this, anyway. We have no authority to do anything.
I know, 'cause the example about, then we would call the police and say, "We don't do that in this town," we all know is not going to happen. What's going to happen better is going to be neighbors talking to neighbors. The point is, is that we create a different town, when we say that we're inclusive of everyone, and we make a list of whom we're inclusive of, and we come back if we need to, because we've learned something, and we add them, and then we become the town we want to become, which is talking to your neighbors, not calling the police. And I think that it would be really valuable to listen to people of lived experience, and are those people who are listed in this, in the group that's been, in the names of the categories that have been removed, if the, if people from those communities came forward and said, "I do experience, um, homophobia or racism, or transphobia, um, in the town of Clarendon." I wonder if that would move the needle for you guys? 'Cause I wonder if your identities have ever been something that have been put up for debate?
Me being Russian, on one side of my family, and Irish on the other, believe me, I've heard it both ways, throughout this state, but New York state. And I took, when I was younger, offense at somebody calling me a certain name, whatever it was, uh, and, but now, I've matured, I think, enough to say, you know, look at a person and say, "You have a right to your opinion, I have a right to my opinion, we can disagree and respect each other." Before, before I go there, if all of those identities were in our, what we decided to, you know, rewrite this or something like this, what is the benefit? If you already have something in here that says "all," you know, "all people"?
Because I would know, that you would be learning, using, understanding, and protecting people from the gay, lesbian, transgender community, that you would be representing, understanding, and learning the language of people of gender expansive identities, you would be learning about race, and that race is inclusive of white and all races, black, Asian, et cetera. I would understand that when you're talking about religions, that you would mean the Muslim faith, you would mean the Jewish faith, you would mean the Catholic faith, I would understand all of that, because it would be explicit in there. And, it, it is important to make sure that people are seen and visible, and one of the ways to do that is to make a list that includes people.
I think, too, historically, Michael, "all" has not really meant "all," and so that, like, there's a, there's a problem for me trusting that, you know, that in, in political documents, when people said, "All men are created equal," they don't really mean all men. And so, that's why we call out those, those identities, because I don't trust it anymore.
But in the same token, though, when you're saying "all" doesn't necessarily mean "all," that is the, the area where we are, I'm sure, before the Civil War, Revolutionary War with the British, Civil War with the black individuals in, in the states here, that, and now we've gone, what, a hundred years, or just a hundred fifty years later, and we're still doing this. And, by using the term, in my opinion, "all," we're saying now, "Wake up, everybody, this is it, all means all of us, we're all together in this fight."
Yeah, I can't really trust that until we start acknowledging the people who we haven't brought along with us. I, I just can't trust it.
I, I agree as well, it's not something that I can trust without it explicitly in the statement. I'm wondering if other people in here agree that it's something, or it's a list worth, um, making?
I agree. I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that if the governor listed them for the state of Vermont, I don't see a problem for Clarendon to do the same thing, that's my opinion.
Well, I can tell you that, of the calls that I had, there was more people against it than were for it.
And were those people with a lived experience of, um, people who had-
I don't know all their, I mean, people called me, that I had no idea who they were.
Sure, but people who had managed racism for themselves, people who had managed homophobia for themselves, people, or people who have been from here and feel like we are wonderful people with open hearts and open minds, and what we, what we all want our community to be, and feel like our community is, but then I hear people with lived experience saying that's not the case. So I get that you're getting those phone calls.
So, well, I'm, I'm just saying, I get more calls that say, "Don't sign something like that."
More than one, two, three, four, five, six?
Oh yeah, way more than that.
How many calls?
I, I, I don't even wanna tell you how many hours I've been on this tour.
Hours, 'cause I bet you have been for each call, it's incredible, but like, how many calls about, do you think you've gotten?
I've probably got thirty calls. And, and when, when the people that I do know, that have said not to sign it, when this is presented to them, they said, "Yes, we can, we can agree with that."
And that's where we came down to writing and supporting what is here, is because it was a case of, as I said before, you have an opinion, and I have an opinion, we can agree that we don't agree.
I, I cannot agree to disagree with somebody who invalidates the, the identity of someone that I love. We can disagree or agree-
But don't, but doesn't this say that we are validating?
I don't need to continue to repeat what was said.
So, so let me just say one thing. Every one of the identities listed on this, every one of them has had to have their rights, they're becoming "all" legislated or ordered by the court. People of color were not allowed to vote until, until laws came out and said that they were able to, and even then, they were prevented from voting, until there was National Guard troops that had to go into towns in the South to enforce voting laws that have been on the books for decades. Every one of these organizations, every one of these people on here has had to have a legislature or a court tell them that "all" includes them, but that still didn't, that made it legal, but that did not make it actually culturally and socially happen. It still has not, the, the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, everybody thought, "Hey, we got this Civil Rights Act in, everything's fixed, everything's good," but if you read the news, if you pay any attention to what's going on, there are tons of people every day being discriminated against, because they're in one of these categories, in one of these groups.
I agree with you, John, but-
And by stating it, by stating it out, you are recognizing that these people, these individual groups have historically been discriminated against, and have not been included in "all," for most of the time that we've understood these gender identities, races, religions, sexual orientations. They have not been included in "all."
But by doing, but by doing-
By just saying "all," you're not telling them that they're still included, because "all" to them has not been inclusive in the past.
But by doing, by, by doing this, John, the town is now, at its level, local level, is acknowledging more than what you're saying all the way back to nineteen sixty-five.
But you're not, you're saying "all," which, when, when the founders wrote, "All men are created equal," they meant all men, didn't include women, didn't include people of color, didn't include indigenous people who were here when they got here, and whose land was stolen from them, at the point of a spear, at the tip, at the barrel of a gun, or whatever it was, didn't include any of them. "All" was written into it, but it didn't include those people. "All" has not included the people in these groups for a very long time, and in some, in a lot of people's minds, it still doesn't. I was at a sixth grade basketball game in the elementary school right up here, right up the road, and one of our players was called a racial slur, right on the court. I saw it, I witnessed it, it happens. That's just one incident.
I agree with you, John.
And there are tons of other incidents, if you talk to any person of color who has gone through these schools, Clarendon, Mill River, I guarantee you that they have had some kind of racial slur, some kind of discrimination, some kind of abuse hurled at them. And I know, when my daughter was in school in Mill River, she was constantly speaking up for her friends who had a different gender identity than just male or female. Those, those groups have not been included in "all." So "all" does not include them by default, because it has never been enough to just say "all" in the past. You cannot do this-
Do you think, do you think by putting all those descriptions in this, that's gonna change what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
It will certainly be a really good step towards the town of Clarendon, showing people in these groups, that yes, we see you, we understand the struggle that you've gone through, we acknowledge you, and we value you. You know, this is a bad example, but it was the only thing that popped into my head. When you go grocery shopping, do you just write groceries on your list? Of course not. You write down everything that you wanna get, everything that you want, that you want. These are things, this is something we aspire to, that we want to have in our town, we want to have this inclusion of these groups, of these people, we want to know, we want them to understand, when they read this on our website, or in the Town Report, or in the minutes for this meeting, we want folks in those groups to understand that all, that they are included in this. If you just write "all," that is not gonna be clear to the people who've been historically marginalized and discriminated against for hundreds of years. It's just not. It won't do what we wanted, what we are aspiring to do for this town.
Marge?
Well, we can't go back and change history, and you're talking about years ago, Civil War, this stuff, but I know Clarendon, and I know a teacher that was teaching, and they were teaching the kids about blacks, the race, and how they were treated as slaves. Second grade kid came back to class and cried for twenty minutes, and said, "What did I ever do to any black kid?" They could not understand, because here we are, teaching children this, and "all" means "all." If these groups don't wanna say "all" is "all," and "I am included," you know, that's really their preference. But when you say "all," and I think, we voted you guys in, you've got the phone calls, you know the majority of the people want you to sign this tonight, I know, I've talked to a lot of people in Clarendon, and they want you to sign this tonight and put it to bed. And I'm saying, let the Select Board phone on it.
I could get thirty more people to call.
Pardon? I didn't hear.
I'm just saying that I know of a lot of supporters that aren't here in this room right now, that have also spoken, spoken to us, spoken to everybody else, there's more than thirty of them, in this town, that have spoken, saying that this is an important movement. And I could get them to call, if you want them to call, I can get them all to stand, stand up and give their testimony.
My question, and I can, Art, I'm gonna ask a question to you, just because I know you like phone calls, I'm wondering, how many letters did you folks receive? I'm wondering, how many letters did you folks receive?
Actual letters?
Actual letters.
Four emails.
Most of the emails and letters were from you folks.
How many?
Maybe five or six.
Yeah, I, that's, I only.
Emails, letters?
Yeah.
I thought there was more than that.
I, I know of at least.
I didn't get any letters. All I got was email.
Uh, last Monday.
It was an email.
No, last Monday, I dropped off my letter at the town office. I gave it to Gloria for.
My Aunt Katie.
Yeah, it was forwarded to.
That's one of the, that's one of the emails that was forwarded to us, right?
Okay, okay, I did get it as an email.
All right, but it was, it was a copy.
That was included.
Yeah.
Art, you're up there at the State House. What kind of conversations had been had prior to Governor signing anything?
Stretching my memory banks. I really don't, I really can't recall us taking this up as a resolution, but we, we may have. And I know that sounds weak and terrible, but I don't recall us taking this particular thing up.
I know that he refused to sign the first time, and then there was a little bit more work done on it. And then that's when he signed the second time.
Yeah, I, because once I heard about this from some of the folks in, I don't know if they're in this room, but, um, yep, Kate, you emailed me. I tried to think what we did either last, it would have been last year more than likely. When was, when did the governor's letter come? When did it come? Do you have an idea?
I think it's May of 2021 is on that.
Yeah.
May 2021?
I think so.
Okay. So it would have been during, during last year when we were on Zoom. We, we may very well, Mike, have had, had some conversation or even voted on it. I, I'm not sure. I, I can't recall whether we did. You know, I, I like the way you have it written, but, but I, I know that folks disagree some of that.
Unfortunately, you know, I agree with you, John. People have been marginalized and, but we're at the hearts and minds of people now. The laws are there. I mean, this, this piece of paper is not going to convince anybody that they shouldn't say something that they're going to say anyway, unfortunately. There are people out there that you're just never going to convince them that they shouldn't be treating people badly.
Can I?
It's unfortunate.
So I know that there have been other resolutions that have passed in our town with just petitions that have come forward to the board. And, you know, multiple people in the community have signed them, and you guys have passed those resolutions without going to vote or anything like that. So would that be something you would consider, that if we, if we, you know, circulated a petition and got, you know, X amount of names with, with the, with the language that he's speaking of?
Okay, what's the, it has to be 5% of the legal voters?
That's to get it on the ballot to vote, though, right?
Right.
Right. But what I'm talking about there, I'm just saying, just a petition for you to pass that, because you've done that before, right?
I wasn't on the board then.
No, 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 we're talking about another resolution that was passed.
I know.
With just a petition.
I wasn't on the board then.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Oh, all right, all right. That's all. Sorry.
Can I just say a few words? Uh, we have with us, we're fortunate enough tonight to have Bob Harnish, one of the organizers of this statement of inclusion here. And, uh, you know, he's, he's willing to get up and say a few words about maybe what he's seen in other towns. Just for your information, last month when we were here, you know, I reported that 40 towns in Vermont have signed up for this. And as of, I think, a couple of days ago, I think we're up to 44 now. So in one month, we've got four more communities. And one of those towns is our neighbor in Warren for himself.
Good sign. Which, this resolution has, has before us now, or have they been more specific?
Yeah, the, which one are you talking about?
For all the towns that you were talking about.
They're using, some have, have adopted a little bit different language. But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but I think that they'd all have the identity list in there.
They did.
Yeah, well, thank you for allowing me to sit in on this very interesting discussion. It's, as Tom said, it's, we now have 44, maybe 45 towns. I know one of my colleagues is, is presenting tonight in two other towns, Trigens and Bethel. So, uh, and many, and a number of towns have gone ahead without our intervention at all, just, just taking the idea and running with it. And I will say that I don't know of any town that has dropped the individual identification of, of various classes. And as you said, as several people have said, the governor has seen fit to include it in his statement. I would say another phase of this, which hopefully will be discussed, is the implementation part of it. And that is the, the phrase that says that the town of Clarendon will strive to ensure that our ordinances and our, our policies and our hiring practices will reflect the, this statement. And that's an important part, too, and, and that is not in, in your version. But this has been a wonderful discussion. And if, and one thing that our movement has done is really get people talking. And, and I, I hope that, I hope that the talking goes on well past the time when this is discussed here by the select board. It's an occasion for the schools to take it up and for, for libraries to take it up and, and promote general discussion. So thank you very much for allowing me to sit in and to make these few comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, for all your work.
Yeah, Art and Board. What if between "all" and "people," you put "all" historically marginalized people in both places? Would that be something that would be a compromise? It wouldn't list everyone, but would kind of, kind of work suggestion?
What do you folks think?
I, I guess my, my interest would be, why? Why not, like, what is, what? I find it interesting, and there's a reason. There's a, there's a thing. There's a conversation that hasn't happened yet. The comfort level around conversation about understanding populations that are different from you might be the underlying piece of that. But my question is, why? What was your suggestion to add in?
Historically marginalized.
Because I, I don't think that that's, um, I, I don't, I don't like, I like a list of people, like we said before, "All men are created equal" was not inclusive enough.
March.
Is this mandatory?
No, this is request from the public. It's not, it's not.
But I mean, is it mandatory to have this inclusion based?
I think it's an honor for a community who's supporting a common good to have an inclusion.
It would be an honor. But if we can't put "all" in there, like Art said, we are going to have people come in and say, "I wasn't included. I wasn't included." Otherwise, if there's such a disagreement to it, put it out for a vote.
I like the idea that 43, 44 other towns have adopted the statement with the list in there, that anytime I apply for a job, that list is in there. Anytime that, um, that we go to a doctor's office, that list is there, the list that we do not discriminate against. So if every other institution, every other agency, every policy that's written is inclusive of that list, I wonder what it is about Clarendon that's making it difficult for us to agree to that list.
I, I have talked to people that are for traditional marriage, and they're totally against the gay marriage thing.
Marriage equality.
Marriage equality, whatever. And that's, that's their thing. So, you know, when I get calls like that, okay, what am I supposed to say to them?
You're supposed to say that we are still going to allow traditional marriage and honor and respect it in the town of Clarendon as we will acknowledge marriage equality because it's the law.
Well, that's, I mean, that's.
It's also the right thing to do, to acknowledge that people have a right to love who they love. And the state of Vermont has codified, help me with language, codified it in legis, in bills. So that's what you say. I was, I was jogging the other day, and a truck went by, and it had, um, an American flag, and it had a Confederate flag that was half of an American flag blaring down the road in Clarendon. And I want to see that my select board here, which looks pretty homogeneous by, just by appearance, I want to see a statement that says that you, that, that you include everyone and then make that list. I feel like it would provide a level of safety and conversation, just like it provided tonight. Because some of the things that were said in the back, some of the terms that were used, I don't know if you know, people rolled their eyes. It was, these are old statements. These are things we need to learn from. We have a lot of work to do in this town, and we can do it. We have to start somewhere. Make the list.
I'm just, give me a minute. I'm looking at both these, what the governor had signed and what we proposed.
Do we have a definition from the dictionary of "all"?
I don't have a dictionary.
Because I don't understand why certain people want certain things in. When you say "all," "all" is "all." If you don't believe "all" is being treated equal, then we need to work on that, but "all" is "all."
I will gladly address any of that with you honestly. At any, any point, we've talked to the board about wanting engagement. If that was something that you, you wanted engagement about, of course, that would be my job, to do that. My job meaning personally. So if that's, if that's, if that's a real offering?
It's not.
Right.
Because I have no prejudice against anyone. We have a lady of marriage of equal right on our planning board we all love. So I don't see it in this town.
Again, my offer stands for you, if you'd like.
I'll be honest, I grew up in Connecticut, and there's a lot more people of color in Connecticut than there is in Vermont. Never had an issue. Never had an issue.
Because you haven't had an issue does not mean that people of color have not had an issue in the town of Clarendon.
I understand, but I don't think this is, I don't think, I don't see how this is going to change anything.
Because it sends a signal to, first of all, it sends a signal to children. Okay, it sends a signal to gay children. It sends a signal to children who are growing up with gay parents. It sends a signal to children of color that they're welcome in this community, regardless of the fact that there are certain members who might be homophobic and might be racist.
But "all," but "all" is not good enough for children?
What's that? No, it's really not. When you're a queer kid, it's, "all" is not. "All" does not mean you when you're a gay kid. It just doesn't. That's not the message that those children get.
And someone needs to change the message.
That's what we're trying to do.
No, you're not changing it by not.
So we should, I hear that you got a lot of phone calls. I hear that, okay? And I don't think that, you know, I've dealt with homophobia my whole life. I'm under no illusions that this somehow is going to make all the homophobia in Clarendon Springs, Vermont, go away. That's not what the purpose of this is. The purpose of it is to send a very clear message to vulnerable people, saying, "We got your back." We haven't up until now, but now we really do, and we're going to work on our stuff. Okay, that's, that's what it does. As a kid, when I was a kid, Art, I needed this. I needed this because my experience here was so awful. Okay? So I, I hear that you got phone calls, and I guess what I would say is that the fact that there are people who only feel comfortable with a document once you take the word "sexual orientation" out of it, or once you take the word "race" out of it, that's the only way they'll feel comfortable, that should be a red flag.
It's in there with "all." Nobody's taking it out.
It hasn't been. It's not.
You're misunderstanding what "all" means. And if we see something.
You're misunderstanding history, Marjorie. You're misunderstanding the history of what "all" this is. But history informs the present. What's happened in the past informs the present. Traumas that you've experienced as a child affect you as an adult. This is how history works. It's not just national history. It's personal history.
But most of us are out there trying to, trying to encompass and love everyone.
Right.
We never in our lives not loved everyone.
That's what we're asking for, is a statement that says, "You are welcome."
But I don't go out there and say just the racist people or the gay people or the queer people. I say all people I love. And you're trying, you're trying to favor a certain group.
No. We're trying to make sure that certain groups of people who have not been included in "all" throughout the entire history of the United States have not been. It's not that I don't accept it, Marjorie. It's that our society has not. Our legal system has not. Our housing system has not. Our lending system has not.
That needs to be, that needs to be taken on a higher level because the municipality of Clarendon can't do that.
No, but you can start changing things at a local level.
We are with "all."
You can, but you're not. You're.
I guess I would just go back to what the 44 towns who have, have adopted this resolution. And if there's concern about what's going to happen afterward, why don't we talk with them? Like, they're, they're, they've done it already, so why, they're not that different from us. Why don't we just talk with them and see if it's been a problem?
That being said, that would require us to do a little bit more informational gathering.
Yep, absolutely.
So we can move this to a next meeting.
That would be okay with most of us.
That's true. It's a great idea.
I'd rather see this get done thoughtfully and properly than something done quickly just to get it done.
Basically, looking at what we had proposed, what is the biggest setback? If you're looking at what the governor has proposed, what is the biggest setback that you do not agree with?
I think we've said repeatedly, it's the lack of inclusion of those marginalized groups in the statement.
Explicitly named.
I think every one of us has, everyone that's talked has said.
I just want to make it clear before I ask for a motion to take this.
And here's, I'm going to make another suggestion. And that is if the board, instead of doing some of the, some of this work here in the select board meeting, you might consider creating a small ad hoc meeting of a couple of select board members and a couple of people from our group who can sit down and talk about this statement and try to come up with something that works. It's sort of like negotiations with the teachers' union or negotiations, you know, or your budgeting. You do that in smaller groups. Or we had that ad hoc committee for the road crew a couple of years back. I think if we get some people together that can talk this through and maybe learn something.
The issue, John, is.
John, you're saying two of you guys and two select board. Aren't you excluding me? You didn't make, you didn't make us.
We can include anyone we'd like. That's just a suggestion. It was a suggestion. Marjorie, it was a suggestion.
I know.
I'm not the one that sets the committee. That's these guys. I'm not excluding anybody, Marjorie. I'm just making a suggestion.
The thing is, we could, unless it's a, a meeting of some sort, we can only have two select board members who are aware of it. Otherwise, the state says that's a, three, it's a meeting.
Unless it's a subcommittee, and then it's, you can have committees. The school board did it all the time. We had committees that had.
As long as it's not, it's got to be less than three.
It's got to be less than three.
Yeah, that's clear.
We can do that.
How many times we danced this dance?
I've done it, too, in the school board, Mike, and I know.
School board is different.
No, it's not. It's still the municipality and it's still governed by the same rules for, for forums and open meetings.
He's saying two, Mike. Mike, he's saying two. So two is allowed.
Right. That's what, no, that's what, but my statement to you was that we can't have three members of the select board unless we have a formed meeting. So two members of the select board, I mean, that's okay with me. But then the rest of the select board would have to agree to do that, Marjorie.
One more statement. There were a couple of people that ran for the school board, and we saw the flavor of the town. They got voted out of the school board. I say no more.
I got a couple of things to just, we're starting to wrap up here, and you're thinking of identifying a couple of you folks and a couple of people from here. But just something to think about, you know, I jotted some things down here. But, you know, we recently learned that the governor's proclamation was really intended to be a guide for municipalities to use in developing their own declaration. to use in developing their own declaration, you know, which takes into account the uniqueness of every, every community, every town. And the Vermont League of Cities and Towns endorses the declaration, lots of attorneys have reviewed it, and much of their inputs form the basis of the governor's proclamation. And, and the proclamation in, in and of itself is really empty, it doesn't, it doesn't lay out any plans or recommendations or strategies on how to meet the identified commitment of inclusion. Nothing in that proclamation says that Clarendon is welcoming, and we would like to have folks consider living and working here, you know, so, and that gets back to some of the uniqueness, and, and that's why probably intentionally the governor was a little bit elusive in what he had to say. He's elusive in some things, but certainly not elusive in the identity that we have in. Adopting the proclamation without the structure behind it will appear to be disingenuous, a disingenuous undertaking for our townspeople, and for, by anybody that may want to move in here, you know, it's just sort of a, you've got that statement there, but what are you doing about it? You know, what are you, are you working on your policies and things like that? The governor announced that the second week of May this year will be the 2022 Inclusion Week. And in addition to that, also, you might have heard that the Vermont Business for Social Responsibility is running a webinar called Vermont Declaration of Inclusion, Why It Matters, and What It Means For Your Organization, and they're running that tomorrow at ten o'clock, not that anybody would go, but that's just, you know, this is, this is sort of a, a thing that's, is rising up in this state, and I think it's getting a lot of attention. You know, and I think we've been working on this now for, you know, a few months now, and Bob has been working on it for a year now or more, so, you know, we think that this is the right thing to do, and we certainly hope that if we can't come to a, an agreement on the text tonight, that, you know, we spend a little more time thinking about it, you know, going through it, and we can probably all come to an agreement, eventually we've got something that everybody can live with, and, and that statement, however it comes out, will be a welcoming statement for, for the town, or for people that may want to come here, the people that do live here. So, thanks.
Well, sir. What, what is the board feeling on forming a committee of sorts? Art?
I don't have a problem with that.
Bob?
No, it's not right with me.
Okay. How many of you folks might be interested in?
Probably all of them.
Some people are more comfortable doing wordsmithing than others, but
So, I, I think the proper way, and to, to do that, is like we've done with our other committees. I think there has to be a period for people to declare, whether they submit it in writing to Katie or whatever, declare that they're interested, and then the board, obviously, traditionally, like with the road committee that John referenced, you know, like, we tried to pick a diverse group that could all chat together, and select like, probably five, six, maybe seven at the most, I would say, that's usually about the max you want to go, so that you don't have way too many opinions in the room.
That's including the two select board members, or excluding?
I would say include, in, in my experience with committees, that would be including your two select board members, you would do
People, it'll take forever to have everybody express their opinions, and you're gonna get a lot of overlapping
Correct. So, what I would
Would you post that, would you suggest posting that?
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was getting to, I would post it, collect interest from, so we can have Gloria do that on the website, post it, and they can submit, basically, interest letters, obviously, knowing that seven, it's not gonna be everybody, but, um, then the select board can look through and try to, again, we, we had quite a bit of interest in the road crew committee when that was going on, and try to pick a diverse group to be able to take a look at it.
Folks willing to go that route?
So, so if that's the case, I would make a motion that we begin the process to formulate an ad hoc committee on the inclusion statement, um, and that post can happen, I'm assuming, pretty much immediately, tomorrow, um, and
I just want to ask, who would make the decision as to the members of the committee?
It would fall to the board, because it's, it would be our committee, so the board would select.
The board would select the community members that get to participate?
Correct. Yep.
It's a board committee, so that would
The board, the, it's a board committee, so the board has to select.
That's how it usually works.
Sure, I got it, okay.
Um, and then, again, knowing that this is, this is a bit of a process, I would say that, I don't want to go too far out, but I think you've got to let the committee work, so target the first meeting, give it a month, so target the first meeting in June, to hopefully have language to approve, that gives, that gives a month to work something out, because we're gonna be two weeks out before we can even select the committee at this point, because the committee can't be selected tonight. So you got two weeks out, and that gives four weeks for work and report back.
Or unless recommended from the committee that they are satisfied
Or if they have it before then, I guess they could send it earlier, that's true.
You can set a target date, and it can be
I would say that
Depending on where the committee
I think that would be the tar, the, the target date would be no later than whatever that meeting in June is, June
First
It's the first meeting in June, so
Thirteenth.
It is the thirteenth, okay.
So is that a motion, all that?
Yeah, it was, but
Says the person who has to write that down.
You want to read me back what you got?
I don't have much.
Okay. So the motion was to create a committee
Yeah.
To post on the website and have that, you know, letters of intent back, so that we can set a committee next meeting, two weeks hence, and then have a target date of June thirteenth to have something.
Resolution.
Have a resolution in hand.
I'll second. Are you for this discussion?
I'd just like to say one thing, I've listened here all evening, and I don't agree or disagree with the people, but I've lived in this town eighty-four years, and I have never seen any major discrimination. I have two black grandchildren that have gone through the school system with no major rights. Sure, there's minor things that happen occasionally, I'm not gonna say there isn't, and it's gonna continue to happen no matter what, but I just want you to realize that I'm not strictly a one-sided person here.
Well, I also want to say, um, the, the biggest problem with people is they don't like change. People do not like change, that's why they don't like Flatlanders, because Flatlanders come up here and they want to change things. So when we're saying, well, we want to do this declaration, all of a sudden they're thinking, oh, man, we're changing things, we, people do not like change, and that's a big problem, that's a big hurdle that we're
You think that's a big part of what we're seeing?
I think so. I do think so.
You know, you almost have to overcome that if you want your town to grow, prosper, and more people feel like they want to move in.
Well, yeah, change happens every day, I mean, but I'm just saying, I think that's a lot of what, I don't, I don't think that people in this town are, are totally against what you folks are trying to do, but they just don't want to change.
Well, here's just food for thought, if the nineteen sixty-five Voting Rights Act, Civil Rights Act had been put out for a vote, and that, at that moment, in every town, in every state, in, in the nation, it wouldn't have passed.
Oh, yeah.
That legislature had to make a decision that doing what's right isn't always easy, and doing what's easy isn't always right.
That's exactly what the four of us, or five of us, tried to accomplish, by writing this up, a brief, it seemed like we were concerned with both sides of the, the issue. You folks came in, you presented your thoughts, we are listening, I hope you understand that, and we want to work with everyone, both sides of the issue. So, having said that, has a motion been made, seconded? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I just want to clarify, you're gonna accept, like, letters of interest, but you're asking for five members from the public, right? Because two of them will be
Yeah, I would say so, because you're gonna have, if we go, if we go a maximum of seven.
Yep.
Mary Ann's got something.
I was just saying, I, I really appreciate the work you're doing, and listening to us, us, and listening to other, the other people too. I know I'm eighty years old, and I've learned a lot in my life, and I've had to change a lot too, but I think for me, it's always respecting the person, you know, what is it that I don't understand about that person? And, um, what thing can I do to help make my community better? So I appreciate your taking this up with us. I guess my biggest concern is that I don't know why there's a hesitancy to list the marginalized group, uh, but I do appreciate your responding to us and listening.
Well, I think
We're all learning, Mike, we're all learning this.
To that point, evidently, we are listening, because we now have decided that, well, maybe we'll bring the public involved, get the public involved with it, and go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think it's worked.
Thank you.
Moving on.
We greatly appreciate everything you guys are, at least, listening to us and hearing, well, yeah.
We can, uh, if you folks are gonna sit through, through the rest of our meeting, or
Yeah, we would appreciate it if you stayed through the rest of the meetings, listen to all the other stuff
I got a soccer game to get to. Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
What the hell, there's nobody here.
Listen, you guys, you guys move that, you guys move something ahead of, ahead of me next time, I'm leaving.
Okay.
Done, done by now.
You're the first we get to, right?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the two sets of minutes that are before us.
Second.
Anybody see anything wrong with the minutes? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, Cash or Heidi, did we have any comments left by the road commission?
I don't believe so, I know that Joel is continuing to work on grading the roads, um, this week.
I was gonna say, I think we've got one road crew member right now.
Yeah.
It's my understanding.
One road crew member has COVID?
Um, not at liberty to say.
Okay.
Gloria took a picture of a sign that, I hate Heidi, a picture of it, that, um, which would put on the creek road over there, that four-way stop. This, this is a picture taken in Rutland.
That's a good idea.
I, I don't see anything wrong with that.
Yeah, I drove through there today, yeah.
There's also a similar one in Proctor.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and order two of those to go on Creek Road, at the Walker Mountain intersection.
I'll second. Any more comments?
Yeah, I've seen a couple of them around.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So be it. And, uh, we did the approval of select board warrants, uh, there's Fulton and Jeff, and I think I just gave Heidi, okay, anybody still sitting here, must look at him, go for it. Uh, no guests at this time?
Well, we have a guest. Did you want to say something? Okay. Guess we don't have a guest. Marjorie, you want to say something?
No, thank you, I've had enough.
Okay.
Okay, new business. Twenty twenty-two L E M P adoption, this is Legal Emergency Management Plan, you want to speak to that?
Matt's up.
Sure. Uh, to the plan, did I copy the plan, Katie?
Uh, yeah, Mike does.
Okay.
In his folder.
Mike's got a copy of the plan, if you want to see it, it's basically the same as last year, except you're lacking, um, changed, I changed some names on it, a couple names here and there on it, for the most part, just, you know
But that's about it.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's no major changes anywhere to it, for the most part, it's a short form, we use a short form, um
Mike's gonna sign it on our behalf, right?
Yeah, there's a copy, and I gotta sign too, Phil, but yeah, that's the copy, you know, you've got a top, top
Yeah, I gotta You made Art Menard the primary contact?
I sure did.
Okay, perfect.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
No.
I'll second it.
Wait, who, who motioned?
Art motioned to approve it. I, of course, I didn't know if his motion was to approve him being the primary contact, or if
I don't know if his name's in there anymore, so
Random I'll make a motion that we approve Matt's work. The way, the way it is, I did look it over, and it looked fine to me.
Any other running, kind of permission, it's ruled
Yeah.
But yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And for the record, if you don't have a problem with amending your motion, that only the select board member is due to sign it.
Oh, chairman.
Yeah, the chairman can sign for it, yeah, amend my motion.
Okay, you?
Oh. Stop that.
All in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Apparently, there's a spelling error on there, too, but I'm
I saw that, but
Did you see it? There was like seven or eight, but Katie corrected it for me.
I knew who wrote it, so I figured
That's why her name's on top there, too, so you put a lot of corrections on there.
All right, the V S P two letter of support, this is for the bridge up in, uh, close to Montrier Street. It says, uh, "To whom it may concern, the town of Clarendon identifies Bridge Number Ten as bridge in need of replacement and possible realignment. This bridge is in poor condition and currently poses a danger to truck traffic because of the bend in it. The town is supportive to changes that would change the safety for all motors. We understand that this project will require finance and maintenance agreements. Please consider Bridge Number Ten for the Vermont Project Selection and Project Cryo- Cryo-Orbitizing Process."
Make a motion that the select board chair sign that letter?
Second.
Is there any further com, comments? Katie, do you have anything?
No, uh, that's just a letter that I need to send in for V Trans.
It's just the first step.
Yeah.
Where's the bridge at?
The corner past McCormick's.
Oh.
That
Oh, yeah, that's
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
They told us when they were here that that was the next one on their list.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess Alphritia is on the list first, and then
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's rated worst.
Not that bad.
I didn't, I thought, I thought that one was on the list before Alphritia. No?
Alphritia is a little bit ahead of the game.
Wow.
Interesting.
Huh.
Of course, we're talking probably ten years from now, is what we're talking about.
Yeah, because what, Alphritia was, what, new deck, what, uh, ten years ago, maybe now?
That's what Ash had mentioned, but
I was gonna say, I thought it had a new deck when I was on the board, which means
Maybe you were here. Yeah, cause Norm done it. Norm, it's cool.
Speed limit? That's thirty-five, wasn't it?
Well, it's forty, there, everybody goes fifty-five. I've been driving up and down that road a lot the last few days, and I go forty miles an hour, and people are passing me on the Alphritia road, cunts. The sheriff's been on there, but there's nowhere to hide, there's just nowhere to hide.
They see him, so they're not getting him.
You can see him a mile away, and you come down the road, yeah. Speed bumps. Help cashing up winter time aplou.
All right. Butlin County Regional Dispatch Center, Matt wants to speak
Oh, it's me again, look at that. So, that's just a letter from the town saying that there's a dispatch problem right now, and that, um, dispatch is gonna come to an end in twenty twenty-four from state police, So that's just a letter from the town saying that there's a dispatch problem right now, and that dispatch is going to come to an end in 2024 from the state police, which is free right now. And there's a program, they're trying to get everybody regionalized, trying to get dispatch centers regionalized throughout the, throughout the state, and they're just wanting to know if we're, that the town of Clarendon is in support of the push of getting it regionalized, it looks like, the letter says.
So would that be like, there's, there'd be a county dispatch for every county, or what are they thinking?
Yeah, right now, it's, right now, they can county dispatch, but it could be, it could be a couple counties join together, you know, at that point in time, because it's going to cost a lot of money to fund the thing.
Well, that's what I was going to say, the equipment alone.
Got so many, got to have so many people staffing it, and people calling sick, and.
And obviously, 911 would call into that regional center, right?
Yeah, 911 would come into state police. I think state police are still going to handle it, and then they would send the calls to, if it was Rutland, they send it to Rutland, if they send it to, you know, Bennington, they send it to Bennington. But I think there's a chunk of money that the state gets from 911, I think, so they're going to keep that, I think. But they're putting $11 million towards regional dispatch centers and, and the state. And I think the Burlington area is already up and running on theirs already. There's talk, there's a lot, there's a committee started, there's a committee formed of fire, police, EMS, trying to figure out what, what they're going to do in, in Rutland County area, so. They're talking with the sheriffs, they're talking with Rutland City PD pretty heavily, last I knew.
Okay.
About just maybe adding a dispatcher on to theirs and, and going on and stuff.
So putting a dispatch center in Rutland City to actually have the city be the head?
Yeah, yeah, possibly. You know, I mean, they're, they're, the theory is they're going to have the sheriff's department, sheriff's department building's not big enough, they have to add a couple more dispatchers. Sheriff's only on to midnight. They're done at midnight, you know, so they have to have that somebody 24/7.
So, if we wrote a letter of support of a regional, kind of like Rutland Town, who do you send it to? Because this is sent to all the local towns.
I don't know where it's sent. I talked to Sleckman Hathaway today about it, and he didn't really tell me anything about where, where it was going, you know, where else it was.
Can you find that information out, and then we'll?
I will let you guys know.
Because I think we all certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Want to do, want to see something, we've talked about that, we talked about that back when the debacle happened, when everything got moved to Rockingham to begin with.
Right, yeah, and then, now they're trying to learn the lesson that they, that.
They screwed it up.
They got 60 dispatches, you know, 60 dispatchers down in Rockingham or whatever, and they only got 30 seats filled. So that's the issue that happened. They can't get anybody to work.
They can't get anybody to cover it.
Can't get anybody to cover it. And if you're on for a 12-hour shift and the person calls in after you call in, you know, when you're on shift, now you're working an 18-hour shift. And people are like, no, I'm done.
Well, take a look, I mean, take a look at the city police department, how many vacancies there are. I mean, it's a problem everywhere.
Yeah, so. I don't know what they're going to do. Like I said, we have, we have a committee formed in Rutland County, trying to figure that out. I'm not, I'm not on the committee, but personally, but.
Is somebody from town on it?
Nobody from Clarendon's on it. There's Bob Schlafter's on it from County District County, he's on Killington Fire. There's Mike Skousen from West Rutland, Tom Bucio from West Haven, Bill Hempel from Pittsburgh, and then there's four or five cops on it, and two or three EMS people on it.
Okay.
So you want to make a motion, yes, Katie, the.
Well, I'm just questioning what our motion should be, because we certainly were, were in, wholeheartedly in support, but it's just a question of who we send it to.
Yeah, I mean, find out from Sleckman Hathaway, I'll talk to him.
But I, I want a motion made to.
Support it.
Support it.
Well, cer, so certainly, I'll make a motion that we support the creation of a regional dispatch center. Um, and send a letter of support to whoever the appropriate agency is.
Yeah.
Once Matt finds out who it is, because I mean.
Yeah, Rutland Town sent it to everybody, all the other towns around us, but I don't know where they actually are going to send their letter to.
I mean, my hope is it's going to cut down on the public safety issue that we've had, once we went to Rockingham. I mean, it was just a nightmare.
We might pull a couple of dispatchers.
All right, I'll second it.
Yeah, because it was a nightmare and a half.
Yeah.
Katie, as soon as you get a letter drawn up, drafted, or whatever, maybe keep the talk.
Yeah, I'll let you know where it's, I'll.
All right, so there's been a motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Matt, I know it's awful early in the process. Any thought to what they would do with the towns on the western safety county that they're dispatched to in New York right now?
They keep in New York, they, they're thinking that, that they're, the, the dispatch in Washington County, they like Washington County, Washington County likes dispatching, but they don't want to take any more people on, Washington County does it and stuff.
Yeah, because they're what, Fairhaven?
Yeah, Fairhaven, West Paul.
Oh, Washington County, New York is doing it?
Yeah, they do Fairhaven, West Paul, at Paulette, Dorset, Lakey.
They're doing that corner then, basically.
It'd be harder for us to reach.
This way.
This, I think, anyways, but they're not going to take anybody else on. They might switch too. They might, if they find that, that the dispatch center is just as good, and I, I don't know what the other departments will do on that side.
Well, certainly, the city's not a bad option.
That's the best option. That's, that, that's the best option, I think, is the city, but.
But with their staffing problems already.
Yeah, yeah, I just don't know.
Yeah.
I know there's talk about it. I don't know how far the talks have gone.
Okay.
Any more questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So we'll make it across the board to, I agree. Um, Gloria, town clerk?
Yes.
Do you have anything you would like to report, given that you're sitting here?
I do not.
Okay. Heidi?
No, certainly not.
All right. Katie, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Um, just that green up is May 7th, so next Saturday. Um, I'd like to put a post on the website, because I should be tracking how many miles are green up for the state, so I don't know if I need your approval to do that posting here.
How many, how many, what are you supposed to track?
So like, they, there's this like initiative cleanup, uh, clean every mile, so they want to know like which roads were cleaned up.
Oh.
So I was kind of thinking like signup sheet idea of just who reports back to me.
Now, did.
There's a lot of bags taken already, and nobody said anything.
Yeah, so I could just put it on the website, they could email me what they're planning on doing, what they.
Did you guys have a dumpster porter down back?
Yes.
That's her.
I was going to say that.
What do you mean, you guys? It's us guys.
You're going to be here to charge it?
I, no, I'm not.
Well, that, I mean, that's a good idea. It's, of course, who knows how many people will look at it, but you could also put a posting, because we normally leave the bags outside, right? You, you set them on the porch, so you can put a sign out, or a thing out there that says, please email what road you did.
There's one at the post office I saw.
Yeah, I, I have posted that. I just want to put one on the website as well.
Yep.
Right.
Jay, go for it. I don't even think you need a motion, I think.
Okay.
Go for it.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's a, you're in, you're out. Bob, you have any concerns?
Hmm, just, are we going to pass on the hire and transfer station attendant tonight, or are we going to?
Do we have any?
Didn't we get one?
Um, so I will put it on the next week's agenda, because technically tomorrow will be two weeks.
Oh, okay.
The posting.
Okay.
So next, next, next time.
We have one individual.
We have one interest.
Anything else, Bob?
No, just one other little thing. If Kate or Gloria, whoever happens to run onto Joe, and I realize he's alone, there is up on Chambers Bridge, a pretty good pothole right in the right-hand lane heading south, right in the wheel track, that it's almost impossible, if he has a chance.
Which road?
Right up here, middle road.
Chambers Bridge.
Chambers Bridge.
Oh, captured.
When you live in town, though, you better get up on this stuff.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
I'm good. Bob?
I'm good, tonight.
All right.
Um, I'm good. I have nothing.
Mike, just a quick update, rec committee. We're looking, working on getting the backfield done this year. Uh, we're going to make bases, baseball field on the backfield in 7B. Cash is going to bring us in some play, and we're going to also get some big, large rocks. Cash is going to find some big, large rocks for us. He's got an eye on, and we're going to bring them down to the rec field and make it so that people can't drive on the rec fields.
Probably a good plan.
Yeah.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to charge you for the rocks either. I won't charge you.
You won't charge me for the rocks, so that's good. Yeah, especially on the rec committee too, right? You know, so, and we have a new mowing contractor this year, so, because it was a thousand dollars difference in the mowing bits.
Wow, good.
I want a hockey rink.
We're working on, we're, the, the committee has talked about maybe an ice skating rink at the rec field in 7B in the winter, possibly.
Nice.
Why people be over there in the minute? Then we have the.
Someone will be over there. I can't skate.
Yeah, you're going to be over there, Matt. You owe me one.
Yeah, I do.
So moved.